All right, thank you everybody. Okay, item two forty-five, we have appointments, police department, we've got three of them tonight, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three recommendations for appointment before you this evening. One for lieutenant, one for sergeant, and the third appointment for a special police officer. These positions are open as a result of an upcoming retirement of Lieutenant Detective Mike McDade, who's retiring on December twenty-third after thirty years of dedicated service to the. In anticipation of these openings, we started the process for the new lieutenant back in August by seeking out an independent company to run an assessment center for eligible candidates. We ended up selecting Public Safety Consultants LLC. To prepare for the assessment center, the deputy and I provided the company with a job description and answered a very detailed job survey that made it possible for the assessment team to judge our candidates on real-life situations that are present within our own organization, making the assessment more valuable as a metric in deciding which candidate was best suited to move into the position. The assessment center was administered to five eligible candidates on September twenty-eighth. This was an all-day exercise, and as usual, all of our candidates performed very well, only adding to the complexity of the process. From there, the candidates moved on to the interview stage of the process, where each candidate was interviewed with a standard set of questions by myself, the deputy chief, the assistant town administrator, and Mr. Sagarino himself. Again, each candidate performed admirably, and each of them should be extremely proud of their performance. And although four were not chosen for this particular round of promotion, each of them showed that they have the necessary knowledge, skills, and abilities to do the job. As in each case of promotions and assignments within the department, there is always someone who rises to the top, and I am pleased to recommend for promotion tonight to Lieutenant Sergeant Christopher DiDonato. Chris has been with the department since 2012. He grew up in Burlington, graduating from Burlington High, and then he went on to UMass Amherst, where he achieved a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He then enlisted into the United States Army National Guard and served in the guard from 2008 through 2016, serving as an infantry sergeant from 2011 through 2016. He is a combat veteran of Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan. This experience has served him well, but the department has been the ultimate beneficiary as he has brought his military training, experience, and discipline into the department, and has been an instrumental part of our training cadre, teaching use of force, firearms, defensive tactics, and de-escalation tactics. He has been a member of the NEMLEC SWAT team since 2018. I am currently serving as the vice president of NEMLEC and have had innumerable instances where other NEMLEC agency personnel and control chiefs of the SWAT team have reigned praise on Chris for his professionalism, aptitude, and overall abilities within this specialized field. Chris is a highly respected member of the department. He has been a sergeant since 2019 and has constantly aimed to improve himself, achieving his master's degree in criminal justice in 2020. He has also had numerous specialized training courses under his belt, all while being the commanding officer of our special officer unit. He and his wife Mandy now live in Wilmington, they're raising their three young children there. It is my pleasure to recommend Sergeant Christopher DiDonato for the promotion to the rank of lieutenant in the Burlington Police Department.
Thank you, Chief. With that introduction, I wish to appoint Christopher DiDonato to the position of lieutenant in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Here you go, Chris, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
All right, chief, you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the rank of sergeant, the department had an established list of candidates from a previous exam that was given on October eleventh of 2022. We had fifteen candidates take that exam. Of those fifteen, we ended up interviewing seven candidates last year and ended up promoting two. This year, we used this established list and conducted interviews of four candidates. The interviews were held on November first before the same panel that handled the lieutenant interviews, and again, each of the candidates showed that they have the requisite knowledge, skills, and abilities to perform the job. But once again, one candidate rose to the top, and that candidate is Officer Vito Costa. Vito has been a member of the department since 2007. He came to Burlington after serving as a sergeant with the Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center in Boston for two years. He grew up in Burlington and attended Burlington Schools, graduating from Burlington High School. He and his wife Jillian are raising their two kids in Burlington as well. Since being in Burlington, Vito has constantly shown himself to be a professional officer. He's always been thorough, and he's gained the trust and respect of his peers and supervisors through his work ethic and knowledge base. Since 2020, Vito has served as the SRO in the middle school, and since this past August, I have had him assigned to a dual role of overseeing the SROs in both the high school and middle school as these two positions opened up unexpectedly due to an off-the-job injury. As the SRO, Vito has been a tremendous asset to the police department and the school district. He has always been responsive and has undoubtedly saved the department hours upon hours of time by being proactive and responsive whenever the district has needed his assistance or advice. He is always ahead of the curve and can anticipate issues long before they become major incidents. He has gained the respect of the school district, the teachers, admin, and support staff alike. Vito has been instrumental in institutionalizing the standard response protocol into the school system as our standard practice of response to emergency events within the schools. He is a certified SRO through the Municipal Police Training Committee, as well as through the Massachusetts Post Commission. The skills he has honed as an SRO through his ability to de-escalate, deal with special populations, run investigations, and deal with people across a wide spectrum of backgrounds will service him well as he transitions into the role of sergeant. He has been a swim coach here in Burlington since 2004. After high school, he went on to study biochemistry from UMass Amherst and then achieved a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Northeastern University. I've yet to reconcile that in my mind, however. It is my pleasure at this time to recommend Officer Vito Costa for promotion to the rank of sergeant within the Burlington Police Department.
Thank you, Chief. With that introduction, I wish to appoint Vito Costa to the position of sergeant in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. There you go, Vito.
What are we doing there, chief?
One more, and then we'll take some pictures.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last, but certainly not least, as I mentioned earlier, Lieutenant Michael McDade will be retiring on December twenty-third after thirty years of service. He's been with the department since 1993 after serving as a police officer for a couple of years in Florida. Mike was quickly identified as a professional here in Burlington and was assigned to the Traffic Division in 2000. He served in traffic for three years and then was promoted to sergeant in 2003. While serving as a sergeant, he was assigned to patrol for a while, and then he was selected to be the chief's aide, which is now referred to as the Community Services Sergeant, where he was responsible for firearms licensing, building upkeep, and other duties as assigned by the chief. He was instrumental in serving as the department prosecutor for a time after a retirement, and he was able to put the department on a much better footing in the district court system by increasing our professionalism and attention to detail in all court-related matters. Mike was promoted to lieutenant in 2014, where he went back to midnights before being selected as the current lieutenant detective in June of 2018. Since being in charge of the detective division, Mike has overseen numerous high-profile cases, including a murder-suicide, some shootings, sex trafficking cases, and countless others. Since taking over, he has helped to expand the breadth of the division with the addition of a technology services detective and overseeing an overhaul of our evidence and property room by allowing our evidence officer the support to bring the unit into compliance with best standards and practices. Mike has been a loyal and professional member of this department, and he will certainly be missed, but I'm sure he's going to take advantage of the possibilities to work some extra details in his well-deserved retirement. And with that, I respectfully request the appointment of Lieutenant Michael McDade to the position of special police officer as of December twenty-fourth, 2023.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations to Mike. He's been a great guy to work with over the years, and we're going to be, we'll miss him. And with that, I wish to appoint Michael McDade to the position of special police officer in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. I don't see Mike here, Mike's not here today.
He cannot make it here tonight, but I will let him know. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Chris, come back a little bit so you get the town logo behind you. Congratulations again.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. See all the ones behind, see all the ones behind?
Yeah, I didn't know they were back there. Take case.
I think Mike, no, I think Mike. Oh. It's right to you, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good, very good. Okay, item two forty-six, appointments to our new police station building committee. This is a gift that keeps on giving. We struggle to get, to fill our original decisions. We come up short by one, and then we got a flood of new applicants. So what we're going to do tonight is I had the two select board members who are on the committee review all of the applications, and they're going to be making a recommendation tonight. So, Mike, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this was tough. We asked for five, and we only got four applicants. And then we asked for one, and we got eight applicants. So thank you to everyone who applied. I think we were always asking people to, you know, to come in and help out, and we were overwhelmed with the response for this last spot for the building committee. And we appreciate everyone who put their name in the hat. And it was a tough decision, but after reviewing all the applications, I'd like to appoint, make a motion to appoint Alex Ferguson to fill the last spot in our police station building committee. Alex is an employee at Harvard University, and I think we could use a Harvard guy to help us out, get the job done. So that's my, that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion on the building committee?
Just wanted to make a comment that because of looking at his resume, he's almost like the perfect candidate to be on a committee for a new building. So his history, his work experience, I mean, it's spot-on for what we're looking for.
Okay, very good, very good. Anything further, anybody from the building committee? All right, being done, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. There we go. That's done. And Lynn, Paul, I'm sure you'll reach out to this gentleman and. Okay. Item two forty-seven, this is the one we all look forward to year in and year out. Tax classification for fiscal year 2024. Mr. Tierney is here, our town assessor, with his board members. Great to see you folks again.
Mr. Chair, can I just remind you that this is a public hearing, so if we could go through the.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, thank you, thank you.
Including the ad and open the hearing and all that good stuff.
Okay, the opening, the public hearing and the tax classification. Where is it? My notes here, bear with me. The tax classification fiscal year 2024. The meeting notice has been posted online and in various media outlets throughout town. So I would look for a motion from the board to approve the wave reading of the, wave the reading of the public notice.
So moved. Second.
Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go. There we go. Okay. Mr. Sagarino, do you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have the town's assessor, Paul Tierney, here for an overview of the tax rate classification hearing. Essentially, what we'll be doing tonight is setting the town's tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year. I'd like to thank all three members of our board of assessors for coming to the hearing tonight. We have Kathy O'Neil, Paul Sheehan, and Kevin Sheehan here, all in attendance. And I think we're ready to get started, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
Turn it over to Paul.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll start really quick and just give a brief overview that this is the final piece of the process that started around this time last year. And with our budget meetings and our guideline setting of last year, right straight through to when we approved the budget last spring at town meeting. And now we have to set the tax rate so that we can set our tax bills and have a correct levy so we can fund all of that that we approved last year. So just as a quick reminder, last year, we set the guidelines for a levy increase of about 5.75%. As we went through and finalized the final numbers after everything was approved and after the snow and ice deficit was finalized and the final state aid numbers were calculated in, the levy increase, as you'll see, was about 5.4%, so that's some good news. The 5.75% is a little higher than our target that we usually set of between 4.4% and 5.5%, which has been the last three years. And you may remember last spring, we talked about this year having a little bit higher of an increase based on what we were calling then the perfect storm of the state approving special ed tuition rates of 15% increase and our expiring trash contract that we talked quite a bit about last spring, the timing of those being together. You know, we knew we were going to feel the heat. Luckily, we were able to trim that down and feel good about the number you have in front of you today. What you'll see is just like in previous years, you'll, Mr. Tierney will go through a few different scenarios. The first three are slight variations of the same amounts with little changes in the rates between residential and commercial. And all three of those, well, all of the scenarios you'll look at tonight fund the levy at an amount adequate for us to balance the budget. But as I said, the first three are really the ones we're considering, and the last three are more for illustration. And Paul can tell you what those are and why we talk about them. But Mr. Tierney will take it from here, and we'll both be able to answer any questions after.
Very good, very good. Okay, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. D'Nizio. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to acknowledge my staff in the assessor's office. Jim Dougherty is our commercial appraiser, and Deborah Smosky and Maria Lombardo for all the work they do throughout the year to help me out. Great resource for me. So as Mr. D'Nizio just pointed out, we have several options here for the board to consider. Options A, B, and C are very similar. The average residential homeowner's bill would increase anywhere from $292.17 to the $313.95 under one of these three options, with C being the lowest average residential increase. The next three options are basically for illustration purposes only. One of them is to show the increase that would be at if we increased the CIP to 175%, which is the maximum allowed. And the last one would be if we just used a single tax rate, and that would, that would increase the residential bill over $4,000 per average household. So if we turn to our next page, it comes out to the Burlington average single families from FY23 and FY24. See, FY23 was 659,200. For this year, FY24, the average value of a single-family home in Burlington is 725,800. There's corresponding tax rate next to it with the average tax bill for this particular year in FY24. And by adopting these measures, the saves the residential tax payers roughly 40% on their tax bill. Turn to the next page, it's just a historical snapshot of average single-family home values, the residential rate, CIP rate, average single-family tax, and the percent difference throughout the years. And our last page is just comparing Burlington to various communities, various neighboring communities, our average tax rate and their average tax rate. So if anyone has any questions, happy to answer them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If you will, just to point out one more thing on the historical page that lists what the rates were. If you notice over the last ten years, the values of the average single-family home has gone up eighty, just under 88%. The tax bill has gone up just under 40%. So there's certainly some value there. We always hate to be here increasing tax bills. If we could do without that, we would, but obviously. Also to point out one more thing on the page that just shows you how much of the shift, the benefit we get from the shift by the difference between what a single rate would be and what we do shifting to the commercial, that's almost two times the tax personally. So quite a bit, 40% is.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the data is, you know, the value is pretty remarkable as far as, you know, depending on your personal position is if you're looking for. And the move here in Burlington is not very good. If you're looking to maybe settle down in Florida or somewhere else, you're in great shape there, so. All right, why don't I, let's open that up to the board, Joe?
Sure, thank you. So let me just say this. The tax rate in this town is really good right where it's at. We are going up a little bit on taxes, but when you look at, the other night when we had a meeting, we talked about all the different communities that are involved in this. And when you sit back and look at our tax rate compared to other communities and the amenities that we get in this town for everything, myself included as a resident, the trash pickup, Winchester doesn't have trash pickup. There's a, you could go through every single town of what they have and what they don't have. I don't think there's a better town in the Middlesex County that does better than we do with the money that we get in. So I'm just going to say thank you guys for putting your heads together and keeping the tax rate where it is roughly to a point that we can still understand 200 and say 300 dollars for the year is not a huge tax increase. So when people say to you, well, why the taxes going up, why the taxes going up? There's a million amenities that they have for this town. So I just want to commend you for the great job, the three you did, yourself and the other people that you mentioned earlier. And that's what I really wanted to say first. All right? So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you, Paul, and your department for all of the hard work you put into this. And we in Burlington are very fortunate to have such a strong business community. Looking at this, 62% of our tax nut is picked up by our businesses, which is awesome and keeps our taxes low. And also, looking at this, it's the first time since 2005 that our rate will actually be under nine. But yet, the taxes do go up every year, and that's a factor of just the rising property values and the residential market out there that's gone crazy, as John mentioned, over the past ten years. But yeah, I think Burlington, we're doing well here, and we have to do everything we can to help promote our businesses, help our businesses, because we have a nice match between the residential, commercial, tax. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good point, good point. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a follow-up to what Mr. D'Nizio said, values have gone up 88% over the years, but they've actually gone up 20% in the last two years. So, and for those, again, we have contracts, we have to cost-of-living increases we have to adhere to. So all these town employees have to get paid, and the contracts have built-in steps and whatnot. So that allows, that accounts for some of the increase in the tax dollars. But as Selectman Spay who said, this is the lowest rate since 2005. Three things create what people pay for taxes. Town meeting sets the budget, total budget for the year. We have to break it down and split the taxes between commercial, residential. So we can only lower the tax classification, the tax rate, which is being done. The rate's going down, but when your house has increased 20% in the last two years, if you can get an investment where you're going to get guaranteed return 10% a year, I'd say jump on it, but that's what the houses in Burlington are getting now, basically 10% a year as an investment. So the reason the tax dollars go up, not because of the rate, the rate gets lowered, is the value of the house that increases the tax dollar amount. So I just wanted to put that out there that it's, we can lower the rate as much as we want. No, I shouldn't say that. Sorry. We can lower the rate, but if housing value is going to continue to grow at 10% a year, then do the math, then the taxes are going to go up. They have to. That's all.
Nick, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, as to what the other members of the board are saying, in short, we are, this is a byproduct of our own success. You know, the area does well, so too our taxes rise. If residents want to see the taxes reduced, then at this point, we would need to reduce services to actually in effect bring that down. And I have yet to meet a resident who wants to lose services. In fact, residents are asking for more services. So I think that, you know, we're just in a position where, and we've been saying this for a few years now, is that because of the way things are going, you know, we could literally do nothing and taxes will go up. And, you know, as a homeowner, I can't complain too much about that. But, you know, I think that, you know, the five of us, among plenty of other folks here, year after year, why did you raise the taxes? And, you know, I think that what you've heard here tonight is an effort on our part to explain that we aren't just, you know, blindly raising the taxes for kicks. It's all a mathematical equation that's working itself out based on a multitude of factors that need to be taken. factors that need to be taken into account, which you're, you know, as a resident, you are privy to, you know? So ask and, you know, people are more than happy to sit down with you and, and, you know, help further your understanding of why everything is happening the way it's happening. That's all. Thanks, Chairman.
All right. All right, Paul or Paul or John, anything further from your gentlemen or?
I don't have anything further, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to just remind you, I know there's nobody here, but to ask the question whether there's any public comments.
Thank you, I moved off my game today, so appreciate the reminder. Is there anybody in attendance or online who has a comment or a question or concerns about this item? Not seeing anyone and... Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close the public hearing. Okay. Gentlemen, we have the, your scenarios in front of you. We've known of them quite a bit at our strategy sessions, so I think we're all familiar with what we have. Would, would anybody be interested in making a motion on one of these scenarios we have in front of us?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we adopt option C that has a residential class factor of .591035 and a CIP rate, class factor of 1.706332, which is, so my motion is for that option and for point of information, that is the lowest increase to the residents out of all the options.
Second. Motion from Jim, second from Joe. Anything further on this item? Anybody? Good. Okay. All in favor of option C?
Aye.
Five zero zero, unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Item 248, citizens' time. See anyone in the room? And I don't see anyone online. So I'm mistaken. I don't think so. All right, item 249, revisiting the, the updated taxi and livery, livery policy. And Lynn, thank you for sending over the, out the old one for us to review. I noticed in that old one that we, that Selectman had the authority to set the rates and so on and so forth for taxi cabs. I didn't realize that. Anyway, Paul, you want to, anything, anything new you want to add to this?
No, sir, just, just to reiterate, this is just our continuing, ongoing work to sort of update all the town's select board policies and procedures and, you know, we're working our way through them slowly but surely. And this was a relatively simple one that sort of came up and due to the effort of Lynn and, and our staff, they worked closely with the police department, Officer Salitis. And they just sort of, we found out that we were both doing some of the things related to these taxis, so this policy has been reviewed by both and, you know, we think it'll streamline the process and, and bring it up, bring it up to speed for, you know, sort of the modern day.
Gotcha. Yeah, after, after, after reviewing the old policy versus what we have in front of us, yeah, this definitely needed some updating, which for certain. Jim, you had a couple, you had a question or concern last time we talked about this, I think, did you? No?
No, no.
I'll start with this. Anybody? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we know how many taxi licenses we have or taxes we have in town?
Taxi, one.
One? Yeah, because it feels like these days it's more...
Livery.
Lyft and Uber, and I think they're...
Yeah, they don't have to be, they don't have to be licensed through Burlington.
Yeah, they, their regulations go through, I guess, their own company. Okay, thank you.
How many livery do we have?
Any, Joe?
Two. I just find it amazing that it was amended in 89, 01, 06, and we finally get back to it in 23.
Yeah, and thank you for sending the, it was good to go, easy to go through.
That's very good. There's probably some other ones out there too.
There's a bunch of them out there, I'm assuming here, before we were all even...
Let's keep it, let's keep it managed. All right, Jim?
I'll make one quick comment. Thank you for Paul, Lynn, and the whole staff for doing, streamlining all these policies because as time goes on, certain terminology gets antiquated and out of date. And, you know, that's why some of those old laws are still in the books because no one ever looked at them again. But I applaud your efforts to look at our policies, update them, make sure we're heading in the right direction, getting rid of that old stuff.
All right, Jim, thank you. Anything further? Now, we'll entertain a motion to approve the updated taxi livery policy.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion, we approve the updated taxi livery policy as presented.
Okay, motion by Jim, second by Joe. Anything further, being none, all in favor? Aye. Five zero zero. There you go. Great. Where do I want to start? Subcommittee, Michael, let me start down there. Can you subcommittee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to congratulate the police department. They recently got a $35,000 Edward Byrne Grant from the Massachusetts Office of Grants and Research. So it's always good to hear that we're getting some state money to help out the police department. And also want to remind everyone, I think Sunday from 4:00 to 7:00 on the common is the annual tree lighting. So we're going to see Santa and the common all lit up as we're entering the holiday season. I love to see the lights on the common, it's always nice, so.
They do a good job, don't they, Jim?
They do a great job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
I'm not even going to mention hunting. It was a little bit too much last time, I was all overboard with descriptions, so I'm just going to say it's hunting season. Still.
Still, yeah.
It's still going on, another month.
Okay, very good. Mr. Priest?
Nothing to see there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The fire department for the month of October, they had an extremely busy month. 556 runs total for October. 320 of those were medical related. Fortunately, no major fires, which was good. They, the combined smoke detector program that was scheduled, I believe it was the 18th, they provided and installed 20 smoke detectors to residents around town. Mass Department of Fire Services came in town for a two-day training on emergency vehicle operation, which is basically an obstacle course with fire trucks. Like you've driven them, I don't know how difficult they are to drive, but...
Heavy. Don't stop very quickly.
But again, very, very busy month for the fire department. And one other item, prior to the pandemic, Selectman Priest and I approached the town clerk and Amy to try to run some sort of civic engagement night, some sort of trade show for residents so that we could talk to things, talk to them or introduce them about recycled bins, the big, the large ones versus the small ones, try to have town departments there, try to have the board at help there, all different departments, so that like a meet and greet for residents. Pandemic came in, it never went anywhere, so with the help of Nikki Cadillac, who actually came up with a great name, the Civic Expo, we're going to try to in the future come up with a date, a date to, or an evening to have this Civic Expo. We will have town departments present, we'll have maybe, you know, nonprofit agencies in town. Whatever we think could be helpful for the residents to know or answer questions, even get involved more with town meeting maybe, but you'll be hearing more on that as, as it gets closer, as we solidify it. But just letting you know that we're back on track for that after almost four-year pause.
Very good, good to hear. Thanks, Jim. Just, just one item, I just want to remind folks that the, most, most folks in town are aware, the Wish Tree at the Burlington Mall has been a long-running program, part of the People Helping People group. That started up, I think, Friday and that will run through just, just before Christmas. I will be there on Monday, December 4th with my friends from the American Legion manning the table. It's a Monday. The Wish Tree, again, it's a long-running program in Burlington. And for those who may not be familiar with, familiar with the program, located at the second floor of the Burlington Mall. Table set up there and some Christmas trees were very recognizable. But the gifts that are donated are for the families here in Burlington who may not be fortunate enough to have a, a Christmas. So this has been a great program for a great many years and I hope folks get a chance to stop by if they're at the Burlington Mall, which by the way, watching all the news on the weekend, seems like foot traffic's up considerably over the last couple of years, which is good news for the, for our friends at the Burlington Mall. That's all I have. Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, this evening, we set the, set the tax rates for the current year fiscal 2024. As John mentioned earlier, that's almost the, you know, the one-year culmination when we started the budget process fiscal 2024, almost a year ago. So what that basically means is now that we begin the process for 2025 in a couple weeks, so get ready for some, some budget hearings and we'll be working with departments to put together the operating budgets for the upcoming year. So be thinking about anything that you want to impress upon the budget process as we get that started. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Anything further? Put it on me like that.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Meeting is at your end.